All set? Okay. Good evening. This is the November sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, being held in Town Council Chamber. It is now seven oh one. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Commissioner, please introduce yourself, starting on my right.
Jonathan Formicalla, alternate.
Kathy Williams from alternate.
Leanne Ambrose, Commissioner.
William Porter, Chairman.
Michael Riley, Secretary.
Will Agatha, Planner.
Scott Schatz, I am the Land Use Scoop Director and Town Engineer.
Rebecca Lloyd, Reporting.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda, organizational items. Will be zero schedule.
Should have one in the package.
Yes, it's here.
Okay. We don't need to bowl on this, do we?
Yes, you could.
All right. We have a proposed schedule for our two thousand eighteen meetings. For the most part, they're the first and third Thursdays of the month, except for March, which is a five Thursday month. It's going to be on the first and the third Thursday. And I believe that's the only one that is outside of that first and third. So, Chair will entertain a motion for approval of the schedule.
We approve the nineteen regular meeting schedule. Second.
Any further discussion? We've all on this with just three seated, three full Commissioners? All right. Hold on a little, sorry, Leon.
Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Riley, yes.
Okay. Next up, introduction of draft amendments to Commission bylaws for consideration of the twelve seven meeting. Will?
Okay, in your package should be a document that looks like this. It says at the top, bylaws of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. The last time the bylaws were amended were back in January of two thousand and nine. So what I did is I paired a series of drafts to bring it up to date. Some of it is just bringing things to, you know, the way it is actually done today, and a few other changes. So what I would like you to do is obviously take this back, look at it, and at the next meeting, we have a more formal discussion and perhaps consideration of amendment to the bylaws following the meeting.
All right, so this will be just an item for, it'll be an agenda item for our next meeting. Item number four, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the Commission on any issue that's not related to a public hearing? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Item number five, general appointments, we have none. Public hearing. We do have one new public hearing that will be opening tonight, therefore I will read the rules for a public hearing. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and speak into it loudly and clearly, in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Order of the hearing of an application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and will answer Commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be open to general comments or questions. The floor will be opened to the applicant, who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comment shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the Chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the Chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. Commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the Commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion, such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel the need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The Chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. First up, we have item number six, SEP two thousand seventeen dash ten. Notice of public hearing. This was originally noticed for September seventh, two thousand seventeen, and has been postponed. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Council Chamber, seven Fan Hill Road, Monroe, on Thursday, September seventh, which has now been extended to November sixteenth, or soon thereafter, concerning the following. SEP two thousand seventeen dash ten, file number one five nine three A, eight eight seven Main Street, tax assessor map one zero three, lot eleven, Industrial District one. Special exception permit application for proposed new front entrance canopy. Eighty-eight seven Maine Monroe LLC, owner applicant. Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit one, special exception permit application with attachments. Exhibit two, property survey by Lewis Associates. Exhibit three, first floor plan. Exhibit four, please to the comments. Exhibit five, fleet fire marshal comments. Exhibit six, town engineer comments. Exhibit seven, town planner comments. Exhibit eight, building official comments. Exhibit nine, copy of original application for the Commission. Exhibit ten, site location survey map. Exhibit eleven, architectural drawing. Exhibit twelve, updated planner comments. Exhibit thirteen, updated town engineer comments. Exhibit fourteen, time extension grant by the applicant. Exhibit fifteen, time extension grant by the applicant. Exhibit sixteen, response to comments by the applicant. Exhibit seventeen, updated joint location survey. Exhibit eighteen, updated town engineer comments. Exhibit nineteen, updated town planner comments. Exhibit twenty, architecture review board draft minutes. Exhibit twenty-one, time extension request. Exhibit twenty-two, request for time extension in response by myself, indicating that there is no more time, and that's why the hearing was open tonight. I also did receive, after close of business, a PDF document and an email with some responses to comments. I replied back that the applicant needed to provide that to you in copies, that I was not able to do that, it was closed of business. So I don't have that for the record, but the applicant is here.
Okay, is there someone here for the applicant? Name and address for the record, please.
Biagio Brolle, eighty-seven Main.
And for the record, Commissioner Manini is here.
How are you?
Good. Okay, sir, the floor is yours.
Okay, so, my name is Biagio Brolle, and I'm here with eighty-seven Main Street Monroe for approval for an overhang canopy for the front entrance. So we're here for approval for the canopy for the front entrance.
Okay, well, there are a number of issues that staff has raised with you, and I believe you're aware of them, you received all the correspondence. Have you addressed all of the open issues with staff?
Yeah, there was, I mean, late in the, after business day today, we'd be sent over all the issues, except regarding the dumpster. Where we're going to put the dumpster, which we found our location in the rear, you know, in the rear of the building, with cement slab and, you know, wood enclosure with, you know, material and all that. That's, but all the other issues, we have applied to the, you know, to everybody to answer.
Okay. Will, could you?
As I said, the information that came in today came out of close of business, and I'm not, I'm not sure if we reviewed it. And in addition to what was handed out, there were some, from your attorney, some other information relative to responding to some of the comments.
Okay.
But you don't have that, and I don't have that.
Well, since-
To give you.
Since we don't have the information that we need, and you have to provide that information and present it to the Commission, I'm going to suggest that we close this hearing for, close it for tonight, but not close the hearing. And you have to come back at our next meeting, which is three weeks from tonight. It'll be the first Thursday in December, which I believe is the seventh. But as staff indicated to you early to, earlier today-
Yeah.
-you're out of time. So we can't grant another extension on your application.
So be here for that Thursday of-
So, yeah, we have to get this wrapped up because-
Yeah, absolutely.
...the Commission has to make a decision within thirty-five days from today. Is that correct, Will?
Now, you have, you have thirty-five days for the hearing to commence and close, and then after the closing, you have sixty-five days to decide.
Okay. But you're running out of time.
Okay.
So, I know you've been postponing and postponing. You can't postpone anymore. There's no, there's no more time. Because the only thing that the Commission could do after that is deny your application, and then you have to start all over again.
No.
And we prefer not to do that. So why don't you, in the next couple of days, business days, get together with Will and get this all sorted out, so that on December seventh, we can go through this and be done?
Yep, absolutely.
And the Commission's requirement is that the Wednesday before, by three o'clock, you need to make whatever submission to the Commission you're going to make. Otherwise, we'll be back in the same position.
No, whatever by Monday this morning.
So by, by November twenty-ninth, you have to have all of your information into Will, so that it can be distributed to the Commission members prior to the meeting.
Got it.
Okay, so, so that's your deadline, the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Okay?
Perfect.
Thank you. Continue to the seventh. Next up is item number seven, SEP two thousand seventeen dash eleven, file number one five nine four A, one twenty-four Enterprise Drive. This is a continuation of the previously open hearing. Will, any new submitted exhibits?
When was the last meeting?
Some information November eighth.
When was the last one?
October. Last year.
I'll start with October. With exhibit twenty-five, request for extension. Exhibit twenty-six, response to comments by applicant. Exhibit twenty-seven, truck turn in the future. Exhibit twenty-eight, revised plan set by the applicant. Exhibit twenty-nine, updated town planner comments. And exhibit thirty, updated town engineer comments. That's all.
Okay, where the others been?
Good evening, members of the Commission. For record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a Boston's professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with the sole engineering. Office is located in the town of Monroe, other than Main Street. Six years of learning, and as our attorney, Mr. Sullivan from Golden Wolf, and also Jack Farrow from Kennedy, the property owner and the applicant. So we're here tonight, obviously, to continue the public hearing for the development of one twenty-four Enterprise Drive. So, only if everyone again, real quick, the trailer of my street is a little bit slow. Site access to the one twenty-four Enterprise Drive, which is the south of the town, one twenty-five is north of it. Along the western side. Site to access the northern end of Pepper Street, and it's on second and twenty-five in this location here. Off the second street, turn left on the two eighth drive, which is the Pepper Street in this part, and then left on Enterprise Drive, one twenty-four Enterprise Drive, which is north of the south of the intersection with Enterprise Drive and Enterprise Drive. So, as discussed at length in the last hearing, the proposal is for outdoor storage area is in conjunction with, one of the special exception uses allowed in the industrial zone. We talked a lot about the issues property at the last hearing, subject to past approvals. However, circumstances have changed, and the property owner is looking to simply use the lot for storage of materials. Again, this is the site plan that was previously approved, including the buildings, parking and such, utilities. And our current application, again, is for just a simple storage yard. As we discussed at the last hearing, we're looking to, we do have revised plans in front of you, and we provided a letter summarizing those modifications from our last discussion. And as the highlights of those, we have provided, and indicated that the entire yard, the entire lot will be paved, with the exception of the stored buildings themselves in this location here. We've added curving. We have added details for that proposed curving. We've brought, included some additional pavement striping for the area in this location, which is identified as wood storage. We've included some additional pavement markings and striping to provide both a handicap, ADA accessible space in this location here, in addition to some larger oversized spaces. Now, these marking spaces we're proposing and we're providing can be used by both passenger vehicles and also larger equipment, which, as we discussed at the last hearing, hopefully may be stored at the property. And that would only be vehicles that are used in operations on the site itself, so that would be a loader, possibly one other, one other truck, and you just wanted to drive additional spaces for passenger vehicles, if they may be here operating a loader or simply driving here, maybe one of the trucks, or operating the vehicle, or the run site, excuse me. You've added some considerable additional landscaping to ensure that there is, the project complies with the landscape buffer requirements as provided by your regulations. It includes a stack of trees, driving trees, and we feel that this will exceed the requirements from the landscape requirements and buffer planting requirements. Again, as we discussed at the last hearing, we've added some additional plantings, so that all of the areas are screened from Enterprise Drive. And again, as the Commission is most likely aware, that you do, when you are driving by this site, just the topography itself, as the existing grades on Enterprise Drive are considerably higher in elevation than the majority of the site in the area in this location here. The natural vegetation, which we're augmenting and expanding upon, already provides sufficient screen, and is very difficult to see into this lot, even now during the winter months. The, we have, here's our, you know, again, we've brought in the revised drainage plan, which provides additional detail in terms of unmodified grades, so that all the stormwater is directed to run along the curve, along the dugout line, prior to collection into our stormwater management system. And again, our management system is being aligned according to the two thousand and four quality manual. This is a series of catch basins, and a water quality treatment unit, prior to discharge into our water quality basin in this location here. Again, we've, we have done additional soil testing on the property, and we've done this with, they have been witnessed by the Health Department, have identified both primary and reserve area on the property for septic in this location here. Again, in the, in your, in your files is documentation from the Health Department, and they have confirmed that they, the proposed means for sanitary disposal of portable toilets, porta potties, is acceptable for seasonal use, and that they do not have any requirements for permanent sanitary facilities. As I stated, our attorney's here, so we can certainly dig into that a little bit more, because there's still some difference of interpretation regarding some of the regulations. We can kind of discuss that at length. You know, with that, we can touch a little bit on, you know, we did receive revised comments from staff this week. From a, from an engineering standpoint, Scott's comments are relatively easy to address, I believe. We did have an additional comment regard, well, first regarding layout, protected landscape end island should be a consideration. We're requesting not to provide an additional landscape end island, just from a making standpoint and the operation, the use on the property. We've provided this with the optimal use of the property. We did have a comment regarding the site entrance exit should be revised, that provide plenty of numbers, small truck ingress, egress, for both the road and the drive access in both directions on Enterprise Drive, since it's an independent driveway, it's a true road. We've, we've designed our driveway in accordance with the Town of Monroe requirements, and it's consistent with other driveways in the park. I believe, Scott, you're, knowing you, I think your intent is to ensure that we can design this so that the trucks can go in and out without crossing over the opposing lane of travel?
Yeah, my main concern is that it's right next to the intersection as well, and right now, you look at the subdivision, and, you know, it's not a, it's not a through road. So it's, it's a judgment call whether or not, you know, we have the driveway to that extent. I think more of a concern is the roadway. Less concern is, is the, the site. I mean, it's not, it's not a shopping center or something like that, where you can have cars going in and out. I'm more, I'd say I'm more concerned about the trucks leaving that are going to cross over to the other side of the road.
Well, we can ensure that we certainly won't cross a double yellow, because the town hasn't installed double yellows on this roadway. But we feel that there, you know, the, again, the Enterprise Drive is actually a thirty-six foot wide road, which is overly wide, and actually, this Commission has allowed pretty industrial roads to be approved for thirty-two feet and width. So we feel that the geometry that we propose is adequate. We didn't, you know, again, we experienced this a lot, as much through these discussions on a lot of different projects, on much higher commercial corridors, twenty-five, et cetera. There's always that consideration, we want to make sure vehicles can get in and out without crossing over that double yellow. However, even town roadways do not provide adequate width to ensure that all vehicles can actually enter and exit a roadway and make a maneuver without crossing over that double yellow. So we feel that in this instance, you know, further widening of the driveway, or additional increased radius to address this specific issue, in our opinion, would be a little bit unnecessary and a little bit of an overdesign, but the Commission feels strongly about it. We'd of course, certainly happy to incorporate that into the design. And then again, regarding drainage utilities, the same comment regarding permanent sanitary facilities. And we can touch, touch on that a little bit, when you get to the Will's comments and similar interpretations. So, I guess with that, Matt, you want to come up with your thoughts about?
Just to comment in Will's, for the record. Pat Sullivan from Monroe. One issue I'm looking at, that has to do with the special exception. So it says, "The plan still proposes a quarter-mile temporary storage in contradiction with the general standards for special, special exception permits as set forth in eight point two point two E." So we go and look at eight point two point two E, and what's the section? Says that safe sanitary sewage disposal will be provided. That's, that's the general concept in that regulation. Then it says, "By need of public sewer line, treated plan for sub-service sewage disposal system, subject to approval by State or local boards." So as Kevin has just told you, we already have the Health Department saying, temporary is fine. This is a, this is a part-time seasonal use, and we don't have a building. There's absolutely no need for a, for a septic system here. So then we go and say, okay, but how do we get around that, right? How can you, well, this commission is obliged to interpret its regulations. And the state of Connecticut has said that, the Supreme Court has rejected an interpretation of a statute, which, as the planning is noted, Commission, you interpret regulations, but the same standard applies. The Supreme Court has rejected an interpretation of a statute that would lead to absurd or unworkable result, even where the plan in unambiguous language of the statute appears to support such an interpretation. So the purpose of eight dash two point two E is to make sure that you can dispose of whatever wastes are on the site connected with the business. And the Health Department has said, temporary, portable toilets are just fine. They're the experts with regard to how property should be, should be treated for septic purposes. And then, if you go to comment two, you realize that Will is saying, constructing a septic system in what appears to be the only suitable area previously commented will conflict with the requirement for landscape buffer. So are you telling us we should put in a septic system? Or are you telling us we shouldn't? Or that the only area that you have there actually would conflict with the landscape buffer? We don't need it. The Health Department has told us that we don't need it. It's not appropriate for this use, and you are the people who interpret what the regulation is. The purpose of the regulation is to make sure that sewage on the property, which is going to be extremely limited, is appropriately dealt with. And I think that putting an portable, a porta potty, and because of the seasonal nature of the use, because of the use of the property, is completely appropriate from our perspective, completely appropriate from the Supreme Court's perspective, and completely, completely appropriate from the Health Department's perspective. I don't think that you need any more than that. To be fed, you need a reference, Rivers versus City of New Britain, two eighty-one, Connecticut, one is the two thousand and eight case, having to do with the language that I just shared with you, which is, you can't lead to an absurd or unworkable result. And in this situation, any interpretation of this regulation that wouldn't allow us to have temporary portabilizing property would lead to an absurd result.
And can you please explain to the Commission, since we're on this subject, how that conforms with section one point nine point two, which prohibits temporary structures beyond the construction period?
It's, 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 it's not a temporary structure. It's the, would you consider a septic system a temporary structure?
No, but a, but a porta potty is.
What makes it a? It is the way that you're dealing with the sewage on the property. It's not, let me-
It's a, it's a temporary sanitary facility.
But the need is only for a temporary sanitary facility. So the need here is not for a permanent sanitary facility. The need is only for when there's somebody on the property, which is only going to be seasonal. It's the appropriate way to deal with sewage on the, on the property, which, as I said, is going to be very limited to, to expect someone who is just going to do outdoor storage to install a septic system on property. It's unreasonable. And you are free to make that determination.
All right, we will discuss that during deliberation.
On that point, though, to the record, I have yet to see any definition on the part of the applicant defining the seasonality of this use.
I think we-
You've just kind of alluded to the fact that it's, you know, the seasons of the weather, and that, and I understand those in a, in a general sense, but you've never put any contrary use statement that really puts down a restriction on what makes it seasonal to make it really determine that it is seasonal. Because if you don't have those restrictions or those limitations, just because the current owner is, has this schedule, the approval doesn't have anything that says anything different, so a different owner could- different, so a different owner could operate every single day, you know, 12, 13 hours a day.
But the special permit is for his use.
No, it's not. It goes to the land. It does not go to the guy. So going to the use is defining the limitation of what is seasonal and you have not done that. That is my point.
I believe, I would, I would just comment that I believe in one of our many responses, formal responses to comments in writing, we have provided sufficient statements regarding the seasonality of this use and that during the winter months, it will not be used and that it's used during the construction season, which generally runs from April through November, December, depending on what the, what the, however the season goes and what the weather is. Now, if the commission or staff would be happy to provide additional language into the regulate, into the approval to further substantiate that, we would certainly be happy to consider that and discuss that with the commission. However, I would, I'd simply request that we're able to discuss that while the public area is left open and even the comments and the concerns regarding the commission regarding septic, sanitary, et cetera. We respectfully request the opportunity to discuss this in the public forum and not simply have the commission withhold information, withhold thoughts, withhold some of your considerations until deliberation because that doesn't give us, the applicant, an adequate time to respond or modify our application accordingly.
Well, that's because it's your responsibility to provide what I just said.
And again.
It's your application to define your use and in that regard, you gave some general language about how the operations operate. It's not very specific as to what this issue is about. So it really comes to you to provide in your statement of use very specific why it's seasonality and what that schedule is and then the commission can talk to you about that.
And concerning the septic issue, you know, 8.2.2 E, in my mind, is a very clear regulation. And I understand that you think that we should look beyond it, but I don't think there's a lot of discussion on what that regulation requires.
And what I'm saying is that the, this use is a different use as well. Very normal uses would have people who are on the property on a regular basis, on a daily basis, in buildings that where a septic system is appropriate. But this use is not that kind of use. And the commission has the discretion to interpret its regulation and the main purpose of that regulation is just to make sure that it's properly dealt with.
Well, we have two regulations. We have one that says temporary structures are not allowed and we have another, excuse me, let me finish. And we have another one that says permanent sanitary facilities are required. And it elaborates sewer treatment plant or subsurface sewage disposal. And it's pretty clear. The regulations say temporary is not allowed and it gives parameters for what is expected for permanent sanitary facilities on a site, subject to a special exception permit.
Chairman, Chairman Porter, the regulations also specifically permit outdoor storage as a use.
Oh, I know.
So just from a, from a, from a commission standpoint, the commission obviously has discretion. They have discretion in interpretation of their regs. They have discretion in how they administer open and loose applications, especially special exception permits. We recognize that. I believe what the applicants have tried to do is to demonstrate that even court cases allow for interpretation on whether or not things are reasonable or not. So if the commission is going to take the position that it's within your discretion to say that because of this specific language, you're going to deny the application, that's your discretion, however.
The septic system that you're recommending is not appropriate for the use of the property. It isn't, it doesn't, it doesn't connect. It's not the right, it's, it's way oversized for what is needed for the property.
And the health department has verified that, saying that the proposed use of a permanent septic system is not required.
Okay, but the health department doesn't write or enforce zoning regulations. We do. So I understand that the zone, that the health department says it's not required, but they're not basing it on the town zoning regulations. They're basing it on the health code.
And what I'm telling the commission is the commission can make that determination. The commission can make the determination that, that.
I understand, but Mr. Solley asked, asked for us not to discuss this in deliberation, but I don't know how we can further discuss this until we go into deliberation.
I simply request that the, that if the commission is feeling strongly regarding something, you want the ability to provide sufficient evidence on the record to support our position.
Okay, I've stated a pretty strong statement and you've given your, actually you gave your information prior to me making my statements, so you've made your statement.
But we would prefer that any other questions that we've had the opportunity to answer them. So for instance, I didn't see anything in the notes that we, or the comments that we got that said, oh, you've got to show it must be seasonal use or you haven't made that issue. And if that issue is then going to come up in deliberation, I mean, the standard for a commission is that they not abuse their discretion. That's what happens up on appeal is if you abuse your discretion, that's something that the court takes into consideration when they, when they overturn cases.
And that also goes to going beyond interpreting and then modifying. The commission can't modify its regulations. It can interpret the regulations, but not modify the regulations.
Nor are we requesting modify the regulation. We simply discuss the intent of that.
Again, I think there's perhaps a difference of, of points. You feel that the commission can interpret it in such a way. There may be a counterpoint that that's not an interpretation, that's a modification.
What I would like to do, Mr. Solley, I'd like to get beyond this point for right now. You, I'm sure have some other issues you'd like to discuss and present and then we'll have the commissioners ask questions individually.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, regarding the rest of, here is comments regarding concerns of POCD consistency remain unaltered by the current submission. Again, we feel that we have provided adequate written responses, have demonstrated their compliance with the plan of conservation development. Difference of opinion on that. Four, the plans have been revised to indicate the two miss pavement for all areas except for the storage bins. 6.1.13 E requires paving these areas as well, unless we by the commission for the standards defined for zone 6.1.13 E3. Again, the applicant should provide in writing, we have provided a formal request in writing multiple times through our responses to comments that we are requesting that the area of the bins be gravel surface instead of asphalt and the regulations do provide for that because if the material to be stored would result in damage to the asphalt paving and if we're looking to store aggregate topsoil-lipid materials, the simple act of placing and removing that material through those storage bins would in fact then damage the pavement underneath it. So that is, again, we provided that in writing in our comments. I'm reiterating it again this evening, but we have, I do believe we provided that in writing.
If you did, I missed that. All I saw was that you asked for the waiver.
We certainly provided at least a summation of what I just, what I just said and that the storage of material.
Yeah, if you did, I apologize, but I didn't see that. All I saw was the request for the waiver.
Well, we can certainly clear that up. The perimeter vegetation, we have provided on the plan, additional notations regarding the plantings that exist and we have provided additional plantings around the entire perimeter. We do feel that our proposal does comply with the required empty buffers and screen requirements. Again, you know, again, the commission has been there and they demonstrate that they would like me to agree with that.
Their plan, unless I'm not seeing it, doesn't articulate along the backside of the property what actually is there that provides that screen.
Along the backside of the property is a forested wetland.
It has to be on your property, not on the.
Along, along the property line is a forested wetland and onto our property is a forested wetland. So there is, as you can see just in this area, there's a wooded area through here. And that forested wetland does provide screen.
If there really isn't anything in your plan that kind of really evidences.
And again, just, you know, for the record, we did just receive these comments earlier this week. So again, as we understand, the commission is not interested in receiving new material under the hearing. We didn't do that. So as we talk through these, again, based on the commission's feedback, we're happy to provide additional information prior to the next hearing. Submission does not conclude section elevations previously discussed. Now again, as discussed at the last hearing, we've, we discussed the elevation change between Enterprise Drive, the bins and the, the bottom of the bins. What we did is we provided some additional notations on our drawings to indicate that based on the elevation of Enterprise Drive and the extensive buffer being planted within that 50-foot front yard area, we provided some notations so that the height of piles would vary based on its relationship to the elevation of Enterprise Drive. We wanted to, instead of just, we wanted to provide some flexibility here to ensure that whatever pile you have is going to be sufficiently screened. And again, the bins themselves act as, will, will regulate the height of the material within those bins because the area repose for stockpiled materials essentially is somewhat of the conical shape, it's at a 1:1. So by the bin size themselves, we're going to be limited in terms of how high those piles can be. What we provided on the plan was a notation that the material stored should not exceed five feet from the adjacent road elevation. So that when we have a considerable buffer, as shown on our landscape plan, if we were to provide a pile in this location, which is a higher elevation than this end of the lot, and if that pile were to extend five feet above the road elevation, the extensive buffer through here will provide sufficient screening so that you won't even be able to see that pot. And what that does is it does allow for the pile to increase slightly in height as it goes further down, further south along the property. And again, we believe that that relationship between the finish grade on Enterprise and the finish grade at the bottom of the pile will really act as that regulate, regulate the height regarding buffer. And that was our proposal, to provide a graduated height. If the commission feels strongly and they would like to impose some other condition, we're happy to discuss that in a lengthy period of feedback regarding our approach on how to establish height requirements for a site that varies in grade, or a current grade.
Kevin, can you comment to my comment, as I was talking about, which identifies that, you know, on the lower pile, you say 20 feet. And then you, if you add five to the road elevation, you're considerably way over the 20 feet. So what is the need for relating it to the road elevation? When you look at the grading plan, which is probably a better, another plan to look at, you know, your grade, I think 466 is your top proposed grade. Is that correct?
460, well, the 466 is our first contour, however, the grades in the road are sloping out, there's existing.
No, I understand that, I understand. But your altered grade or your proposed grade is that 466. And then beyond that is majority of the planted, the new plantings. And then the road is up at 470.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess I, I missed, you indicated that she 2.11 notes a pile of five feet from ground elevation.
That's what your plan says for the, for the, for the reclaimed asphalt.
2.11, yeah, so I think that may have been, we, we, that may have been somewhat a carryover from when we, when we came up this, what I consider the brilliant theory of relating the pile height to the road elevation of the roadway. So we can certainly, we can certainly make sure that the plans are modified to make sure that aren't any contradictory.
Well, you're, well, I'm not looking at a contradiction. If you're proposing five feet higher than the road elevation, you're looking at a 35-foot height pile.
And in reality, the pile will never be that high. So rather than, so I guess, you know, if we have, if that bottom of that pile is down at 440 and the existing grade is 474, we're never going to have a pile that goes at 479 because it's a 39-foot high pile and we don't have room to accommodate a pile that's 39 feet tall. So when I tried to create that, I was trying to look at, all right, we have, we have grades in the road, we have grades in the, on the lot itself, how can we best address this?
And I took a more simpler approach, which still is higher than what your pile was and I took your highest contour at the base of the vegetation and landscape buffer, which is still above your, which is more than 20 feet.
Well, so where it comes in is, let's say this, this is at a base of force of.
I gave you 26 feet. I gave you 26 feet. You're at 440, if you go to 466, that's 26 feet.
466. Yeah, you know what?
26 feet.
I think, I think if, if, if that max height of the piles can not exceed 466.
And then that we don't have to worry about the vegetation getting leggy and all that over time and.
Well, that gives us, that gives us a 16-foot high pile in the northernmost bit.
How does it do the road goes up? Well, yeah, your, your property isn't, at 466 is, right, is more normal than the road, but, but you've got a small bin with stone in it. It's never going to get that high anyway. And how high could that pile possibly be physically, given that depth?
Yeah, we can.
I mean, angle repose, you're not going to get that high. I mean, it's going to spill out into the, the yard. I really don't.
If you take this comment, we can do a little bit more homework and a little more detail on this. So please, I'm sure we can all work, see if this is acceptable or if we want more information, some other alternative language. I would be interested to hear what the commission has to say. The number seven, the proposed wood stump storage area remains unchanged. Again, we've added some striping, we're also going to have to be asphalt. The plans are clear regarding that. We'd be happy to provide that. Yeah, I think there's, I do see a leader which was inadvertently left on as a scrutiny there, which you can call for, provide for the commission to make sure that does not.
We did also talk about possibly adding one more landscaping component like right, Kevin, like right here, which would, would you kind of block your view?
We, we focused on the other side of the driveway and I apologize, I thought during the discussion during the commission, the commission's general consensus was, we thought that, you guys thought that was adequately screened, but if, we'd be happy to add additional plants in here.
That would, that would pretty much scream looking down the driveway.
That's what we were talking about.
That's, that's what we did talk about.
Yeah, I thought, I thought, I think we added some up here, which I thought was, did it, but I didn't realize you wanted something on the north side of the driveway. We can certainly address that.
Like down, down gradient and in, inboard from that last planting.
Or you're sort of where your driveway dimension is.
So.
Yes.
The oversized equipment parking spaces, we, again, as I stated during, well, the plan indicates five oversized, oversized equipment spaces, including 3x36, among handicap accessible parking space, other than the handicap accessible parking space, no parking spaces for site workers that would be divided. Also, the number of oversized spaces which can only be used for the parking on-site usually will be done in 4.3, 4.4G, seems greater than would be expected given the corresponding singular nature of the storage materials. No specific parking standards exist for this use, thus the commission will need to determine the appropriate parking standards to ensure adequate off-street parking is provided. As, as we discussed at length during the last hearing, we talked about the operation of the site, the use of the site, the actual parking demands for the site would probably be no more than, you know, three or four vehicles. What we, what we did is we assumed that we would be able to use, you know, even though the striping is moved out for an oversized vehicle, a pedestrian vehicle, you know, a regular car or truck could be parked in one of those spaces despite a longer space. If the commission does not want to provide for passenger vehicles in one of those oversized spaces, we can modify the striping accordingly. But we do believe that the five spaces that we have proposed is adequate for the use. And I believe we provided sufficient testimony in the recorded record to substantiate that.
I think your plan should represent whatever parking the commission determines is necessary for the use for workers as a separate standard parking spaces and that you should. And that you should provide whatever oversized vehicle spaces you feel are needed for your operation. So it's clear which is which.
Certainly, and we, what we would do is we would provide, and I'll review this with, with the applicant, but I'm going to say that we would have the handicap space, two separate spaces, and then three oversized spaces. And we can revise that plan accordingly. The plan includes the following confusing note. Material storage in the bins will vary in location throughout the season as required by storage and sorting operations. Storage items include one bin for topsoil, one large bin for reclaimed asphalt, and two high, four bins for gravel, and one bin for three-quarter inch processed stone storage. Sorting is a form of processing and is not permitted by the proposed site use standards. We apologize for using the word sorting. We can remove that from the note. And then how are the locations to be varied if the material-specific bins are fixed? And again, what we tried to provide in the note on sheet 2.11, under material storage, which is just above our revision block on the right-hand side of the page, we indicated that the material storage could be gravel, three-quarter inch processed aggregate, playing asphalt process, and the process off-site, topsoil. But we also provided a note that the materials stored in the bins will vary in location throughout the season as required by storage or striking and sorting requirement for, by storage operations. And then we also provided a note that per section 22A-2091 of the regulations of the Connecticut State Agencies, all materials shall be clean fill defined as, one, natural soil, two, rock, brick, ceramics, concrete, and asphalt saving plating, which are virtually inert and pose neither a pollution threat to ground or surface waters nor a fire hazard. So what we're, what we're trying to do is build in some flexibility so that the commission can grant an approval to say that all material stored in those bins can be deemed clean fill as defined by the Connecticut State Statutes. So that if the applicant is looking to move topsoil from one bin to another, or three-quarter inch aggregate from one bin to another, the applicant is enforced to come back before this commission to move a pile, to move a bin from, to move material from one bin to the other. We believe that if the, if it pleases the commission, you could build in an approval that gives flexibility. That note would give, give the applicant flexibility to have stuff in one pile to another pile without having to come back before the commission. Our concern is that, you know, without some flexibility, you know, the fact that we did label these bins to show that these are the materials we expect to see here, however, we can't, we can't guarantee that there is no likelihood that one bin needs to be swapped out with topsoil or another bin needs to be swapped out with recycled asphalt. So what we're simply requesting is that it agrees with the commission to give the applicant some flexibility so that he can move, he can, he can put different material in different bins provided it all meets that definition without having to come forward with the commission.
Are there any materials you don't know of?
No, and that's why we use that, that definition of clean fill.
The other alternative is just that all store and we'll go pegging away the labels. I know we told you to put the labels on and put a list of what can be stored in the bin.
And, and that's why we provided that, that.
I know, but that might be, that might be clearer.
If, if that's satisfactory to the commission, we'd be happy to do that. Eliminate the specific language within the bins and simply refer back to that material storage paper. Number 10, as previously discussed, the applicant was to provide a schedule for the project in light of the need to remedy the existing site condition due to the site's unauthorized alteration in use. I'll address that in a minute because I think you guys like the applicants more than you can talk about that. Number 11, the adage created under the PCC John Conover issued right away, as shown, signed on the ground, set back in the 19th year. And again, I do apologize for the location and placement of that sign as shown on the plan. And obviously, we can revise that location to make sure that it does comply with regulations. I think that was missed in my, in my prior submission, so I do apologize for that. I just want to invite Jack Vedera, the applicant office, to talk to you, to address the commission and, and talk about the scheduled implementation and maybe give a little bit of a tax order problem.
So I guess, for the record, Jack Vedera, it's Five Old Colony Road, Monroe, Connecticut. When, when we, when we bought the property originally, we had intention to build a building and the economy was doing a little bit better. And we were coming from Ridgeport where we had had our business for the previous, since the early 80s. And I was resident in Monroe and I saw the opportunity to develop in town and my kids are in the school system. And I thought it would be a good fit for me and also be able to market my business and do more in this area, which I've, I've been able to do. I do work for the school, for Ed, and I do work for the Parks Department. We just finished the cart, that long path at Wolf Park that went in there. We had the privilege of doing that for Frank there at the Parks Department. So I'm just a local, regular business guy. I'm not some multimillionaire developer coming to town to try to do any, you know, pull any fast ones or anything like that. I would like to be able to have a construction yard, the real construction yard, with my trucks parked there every day and pay the tax dollars to Monroe, have my equipment parked there and pay the tax dollars to Monroe. I thought when I bought that lot off of Julian and Timbols kind of represented to me that, that we would be able to do that. I had that building and I know we have to put up a big building, but just that, the paving business is not equitable to do that. And I sit here with my, my second wife, I, I'm on the backside of a pretty nasty divorce where I was completely decimated of everything. And that's not the commission's problem, I understand that, but financially too, everything changed. So if I'm able to get this plan through and given a little time to implement it, you know, I don't, that's, it would be a very big saving grace. Or you might not be seeing those, those Vedera's pavement signs that like you see too much around anywhere. It's getting harder and harder to do business, very competitive. I'm a second-generation guy, my dad originally started this thing back in the 70s. And I'm, I'm just turning the clock on 50 in a couple of months and, you know, so perspective is a lot. But I agree with the commission's, you know, when I first came in, I know I have some violations and, you know, we'll clean that place up, we'll get a note. I definitely need some time to implement the plan though. Financially, financially wise, I'm also in the middle of a, of a division with my sister, the N, the M and J. You guys have never seen her hair, she hasn't come to anything. So we're, you know, it's hard when it's a father to start something. You guys develop and build it and only one person is doing the work, there's animosity. And so it's been coming to a head for a number of years. So anyways, long and short of it is that I am willing to get this done and I, you know, I, I don't see, it's, it's such a fit for that neighborhood there. I don't see what else can be put on this lot. This lot is a hole. I mean, we, we bought a hole, like threw 300 bucks, 300,000 on a hole in Monroe. So I just like to be able to run some of my business, store some piles there and be able to get in and out. So, so I know this is something that's probably on the commission's mind. And we are in the process of, I have another, a couple, I'm a businessman, so I'm trying to make some things happen. I have a interested party, someone that I'm going to be able to do this with, where the processing that takes place actually off-site, not here. And here would be where the stockpile went and go. So I know that's the big concern with the, with the commission, am I going to be doing processing there? Well, unless there's a reg change coming up in the future, I know it's, it's not allowed in Monroe, so. And I guess there's a couple other worse offenders on that street than me. For whatever reason, I'm the first one, I believe, that's coming here honestly, coming here showing I'm spending a lot of money on engineering. Kevin's not cheap and neither is my attorney, but I'm coming here asking for this approval, I don't know if I can say Kevin.
No, I think just, thank you, Jack. I think that the big thing is though, from, from an implementation schedule, I do believe on the applicant, probably need some time to implement this. And this isn't, I know when you're, when you're looking at remediations and curing the violations and things like that, the commission typically look to try to put a short window on some of these things. With the improvements on this site, the retaining walls required and the established bins and things like that, while this doesn't represent a new building, this does not represent a, a, a low-budget site development plan. So there is considerable costs here. So I think what the applicant probably will be looking for is probably, probably a two-year period to, to implement all of these improvements. At the minimum. And that's what I wanted to, I wanted to give the applicant a chance to address the commission personally and then provide that information that I think at the minimum you'd be requesting two years to implement these improvements.
What's this, is there a current wetlands violation on the site?
The wetlands violation mainly is the use itself that didn't follow the original approval. So the, the process, it is a violation, but is, if they continue to develop the property, that violation will go away.
And, and that violation was cured in the approval that was granted for this same application. Let's go for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
When you say cured, you mean it would be cured when it's implementation?
But the approval is granted.
Yeah, the approval is granted, but with the implementation of that approval, that would cure the violation.
Correct.
And what would happen with the property over the course of the next two years?
I think that it would, it would be the, there would be, you know, continued cleanup of the property in preparation for that work.
Continued storage?
Continued storage.
Without bins?
Well, I think as it, as it is, as it's currently. That's the request before you move.
Pardon me?
That's the request we're making.
Well, if it was a raw site, they would have a five-year window, but they wouldn't get to operate until they're done.
So now you're operating and you're trying to correct the situation.
That's correct.
The, the wetlands approval is kind of, it's, it's interesting how it's worded relative to implementation because it, it's a two-phase thing. It's, it's site development, which normally is allowed to occur over a five-year period. But because there was a violation, there is also requirements written into the approval letter that talk about stabilization and, and kind of buttoning things up within a much shorter period of time. So you might want to look at the approval letter that was provided, I forget what exhibit it was, but I believe you guys have that during the time that you've got till the next meeting if you have any questions for me. It's, it's. It's section F. Yeah, it's in, it's in your.
It's exhibit 23.
The reason the commit, the wetlands commission does that is, is when there's a violation, they say, look, okay, if you want to do development to address that violation, that's fine. But if you don't do that development within a certain period of time, we want the whole thing remediated, you know, stabilized more permanently. That's why they do that. So the expectation is that they're going to pave it, put the curving in, put the, put the basin in. I'm labeling it as buttoned it up in, in terms of protection for wetlands.
Kevin, would it be possible for you to, obviously maybe not right now, but expand upon your two years and kind of outline over that two years, what would happen? And, you know, any points within that two point, where, where it would go if you're not meeting that schedule?
Sir?
Mr. Sow, anything else?
Not at this time, other than I'm interested in your, the commission's thoughts.
Okay, then you're up.
The, the changes, the changes are great from last one to this one, so there's not really much there. So currently, you are using this property?
Currently is being used for, for, for storage to support the business.
And like Will said, there's no bins to separate the material at this moment?
There are some, actually, we've seen some evidence of some, of some module blocks trying to create a double bins in this location here, and there's also a bin down in this location. But the majority of the material, it's all the same material, it's stored on a larger pile.
I'm, I'm fine with the gravel under the bins and in the paving of the parking lot and such. So I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much all set.
Yeah, I just had a question for Will. For your comment one and two, is if the applicant's required to put in some type of septic system, where would it go? And how can it be approved, given the limitations of common to?
Yeah, well, under zoning regulations, in order to have a permitted use, you need to meet all the regulations and you need to provide the components to go with providing the support for that use. Obviously, septic systems are limited to where they are suitable from a health code perspective. On this property, given the amount of disturbance that have occurred to this property, there's very few opportunities or potential for that. There is a location that Kevin's office is, you did the testing, right Kevin?
Yes.
That Kevin's office identified that would provide for a septic system of some certain capacity with a reserve. And so we're kind of like, that's where it could go on this site because of what has been done to this property.
Right.
There is a valve, a leak valve, in relation to the conflicting standard of being in the buffer that the commission had acknowledged when it put in the requirement for the buffer, which the applicant can, can take advantage of and seek a waiver by having an alternative buffer plan that basically satisfies the buffer requirements by putting the septic system in that buffer. So there is a, there is a, there is a code path to find that, finding whether they can do that and whether that limits their development in order to achieve it or whether that limits the development. No different than the septic capacity limits what can be on a property. So I believe that the regulation does have a path to satisfy that. Obviously, it is at some discretion of the commission, but there is a path under the code.
Okay, and my, my only concern is it, it seems fairly difficult path, at least the way it's been presented to me. That, that was my only, with how this, how, how it would work with that. Because is that the only place that they could put it?
As far as I know, it probably is, I can.
That's where we, that's where we tested and identified it's only suitable for septic. Now, again, we are proposing to put in a septic system and we can plant sufficient landscape buffer that complies with the regulations in, in an area that can be used for septic in the future. We're not proposing to put in a septic system, since we're putting in a landscape that complies with regulations, we didn't see the need to seek alternative treatment. And in the future, if we were to put in a septic system, that would be required to come before this commission. And we could seek an alternative landscape treatment in that location at that time. But I do want to point out though, part of the, part of the, I think, concern regarding the interpretations regarding a septic system or not is that it's, it's, my opinion, based on collective discussions, is that if, we are obligated to put in a septic system, that would be, then we'd be obligated to put in a building. And based on my discussions with Will, it is his interpretation, that the minute we put up a building, we are no longer allowed to do outdoor storage because the storage is tied to the size of the building.
I don't know where you got that, Kevin.
Well, in our discussions.
I've never said that.
You, you have said that.
Absolutely have not said that. This use, this.
You have identified that.
You're absolutely wrong. This use, as you identified, allows, the use is outdoor storage. Just because you add a building, doesn't change that use one bit. I never said that just because you. I never said that just because you put a building on, all of a sudden this use that you're applying for goes away.
Well, we, our discussions have been, and, and, I mean, other people have been part of these discussions, our discussions have been is that once you put up a building, your, your storage is limited to 20% of the building.
Absolutely not. I've never said that.
Okay, well, that, that's.
There it is.
That's not the case, so we can move on from there.
Correct.
So that, that was a concern of mine, but also for the paving of the lot, you're not going to pave the bins, the individual bins you're going to, you're asking for use of?
Gravel.
Gravel, right?
Requesting it, yes.
Okay. I may be misremembering this from the last meeting, but there was a little concern about the contents of those bins and possibility of contamination, and that's why certain bins were going to be paved? Or is that from the?
Well, the tailings, the bin that holds the tailings, we had talked about that one being paved.
Okay.
There was another.
Well, you're not, you're not proposing to store tailings, are you?
Tailings? You mean millings?
Millings.
I mean, that's part of what, the recycled asphalt.
Well, recycled asphalt, but.
Yeah, not, not, not millings in, in its, in its sense that.
More reclaimed asphalt than millings.
Correct.
So the risk would be minimal if, if, if any?
Yes, and actually the, the state of Connecticut and state statutes identify that as, in their literature, that doesn't oppose the risk for.
Those were the only two questions, yeah. Kevin?
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with the gravel. I don't think that that's, that's an issue, but I do have a question, kind of following up on the septic situation. Is there water on this property?
We, we are proposing to connect, to provide a connection for water.
And where would, how would somebody get to this? Speak it? I mean, what, what are you going to do?
We are proposing to install a line into the existing main and enterprise drive. We go into the meter and then we go to a hose bid on the property.
So it's just for your hose? No hot water, just plain old cold water?
Correct.
Maybe the pipe will freeze in the winter and too bad?
Well, we, we put the pipe underneath it and there'd be a, you know, a blow off so it could be drained, you know, for the, for the hose bid itself.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, it's a standard, I don't think we can deal with from a, from a contractor's standpoint.
Okay. Because I think that water would be important. Do you have a, a proposal for the sign that you're going to put up?
Uh, we, we did provide a detail, we just provided a simple detail, just a sign that showed just 124 is the address. It's all we're proposing, we're proposing any other sign information.
I would like to propose, and I, I think I may have brought this up at the last meeting, I would like to see the name of the business on the sign, the street sign itself, but also who owns the property in case somebody sees vandals and case, in case who knows and who's what. If they should feel they can immediately have recourse to contact someone in case, just in case. The yard is not intended to be fenced, is that correct?
That's correct.
In, in, is there, Mr. Dara obviously has a business operating elsewhere where he has a building and he has offices and he has trucks and whatever. Is there any intention for a long-range plan to build a building there so he can consolidate all his business activities on, on one property?
He would love to do that.
Is this private, is this land not suitable for that?
Oh, the, the land is suitable for that.
Okay.
It's just the, the economics.
So I guess my question then is, then we, that we might want to take into consideration the, the septic in terms of a long-range plan. I'm, I'm just kind of picking that out.
No, and that's what, that's what we have done. In terms of our septic investigation, we identified areas and we've designed the, you know, what that can accommodate, that can accommodate ability on this property. Again, a lot of the, all the areas in large in size, there are technology that we can put in to provide sufficient septic capabilities to, for, to accommodate a, a building of this property.
Okay. And I have two other, two other questions. Could, could somebody explain to me, just so I would understand, why we are requiring handicap spaces in this type?
It's federal regulation.
For any development, any property, ever, ever? Okay, that's the answer to that. And my favorite question, because you're going to love it, and are you going to plant landscaping along the street?
Considerable landscape, landscaping.
Trees, trees.
Lots of trees. Look at all those trees.
Okay, lots of trees. The landscape trees, the, you know, the street trees, that's what I want, okay. Just want to make sure we've got street trees. Okay, that's it.
Leon?
Mr. Soli, what is your definition of seasonal?
Construction season. So, so oftentimes a lot of contract, so, so.
You have specific dates?
As paving contractors, paving contractors are pretty much at the, at the will of paving asphalt plants, right? So asphalt plants close during the winter months, so usually around, you know, mid-December, early December, depending on the season, depending on temperatures, those plants close and those plants don't open again until March or April, depending on again. Because placing asphalt in the winter in freezing conditions is problematic, you have to add additives to make, to ensure that there aren't cracks and things like that. So, so for a seasonal standpoint, it's a construction season, which generally runs from the spring through the end of November, you know, December. Which is why you may actually see a lot of driveway paving signs all around town because everyone tries to get them before the end of the year.
But that doesn't explain seasonality during.
Right.
Because whether it's eight months or 12 months, if the eight months are all day long, the people that are there have a need.
So, so, so seasonal, I think the seasonal variations within the construction season itself are different when at the beginning of the season, there's more road demolition happening, there's more excavation happening, there's more of that where you may have more importing of recycled asphalt and then towards the end of the season, people are putting down finished pavement courses and things like that, they're using that material to, to use as sub-basin, things like that. So I think that from seasonal.
Yeah, but that doesn't tell me, or tell the commission, the use of the site, season during the construction period. Is it eight hours, seven days, six days, five days a week, or is it only three days a week?
It, it, it varies, but it's certainly not eight hours a day for five days a week. This, this site would not be manned or operated eight hour, you know, eight hours a day for five days a week. It's more, at the end of the day, trucks could come and, and offload some, some material that was generated from a job that day and then just put in a bin to be stocked on.
No, I understand, I, I understand, but I'm saying that the way you're saying seasonal, like it's a certain period of time is going to be and, you know, it's not going to be a full-year thing, but seasonal could be anything. It could run into, if we have no snow or no bad weather or anything like that, you could run it full year. But, so seasonal is not, you don't have like a specific time here, you're just saying that we're going to run the construction yards seasonal. What season is it that you're going to use it? I mean, I'm saying, I understand what he's doing, you understand what I'm saying, but, but this goes to the property.
Understand.
And so if you're asking us to approve something seasonal, then he's in the paving business, but what happens is he sells it to somebody else that wants to use it as construction yard that doesn't do paving. It's not seasonal anymore.
Just to, just to back up Leon's point, we discussed last time, I asked if we were, if he was going to sell to other contractors and stuff like that and it was a no. So it's basically his own stuff that he's using that he's.
I, I think.
No, I understand, but what my point is.
Saying if he was to sell it to a different entity.
Right, if you sell the property.
Sell the business, sell the land.
Because the approval goes with the property.
Of course.
So if he sells it to something, somebody else, it's no longer could be a paving contractor, which is seasonal because it.
If he sold it to a different contractor, wouldn't they have to come before us to?
Not if it had outside storage use.
Not if it had outside storage use, it would.
If it complies with the approval.
So there's no, you don't, you don't, so seasonal means nothing to our approval on this. It won't be.
I think, I think.
But I mean, for his use, I understand that, but.
I understand, what I think I could, what I'd offer is that let us write up some more definitive language regarding the seasonality to maybe put some additional parameters in place that we should consider as part of our approval so that these questions and concerns could be addressed with specific language that would, you know, be acceptable to the applicant and obviously acceptable to the commission, maybe change.
So you'll bring that at the next meeting?
Yeah.
The other thing is, you're looking for to do this for two years, to hit this in two years. And I can understand that, extend it out. Are you going to give us quarterly reports on this?
You'd be happy to, I, I mean.
Well, I mean, because we probably, we'd need something to see the progress of it going along.
Yeah.
I mean, so.
Well, that's what I was suggesting, that Kevin put together a little more.
Time frame.
Discussion about what happens in those two years, what the milestones are and, you know, if there's a checking in period or whatever, you know.
And you're willing to give.
And what happens if you, what happens if you don't meet that sit, section, or that milestone?
And we're going to need to talk about meeting the wetlands' expectations.
We've got to build that into the schedule.
Yeah, and I did just review that again and we'll have to.
Good chunk up front, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can certainly, you know, I, I don't think that's unreasonable, we can certainly do that.
Anything else, Leon?
In the Health Department, you have a letter from the Health Department?
Yes, we do, it's, it's one of the exhibits in the, in the writer's.
You know, is it in this file and not in the other file? Because I remember having a discussion with the Health Department, saying I needed a new comment for this file.
There's not one in this file.
Remember you had the first one with Ruth Drow?
Yeah.
And I think that's when he wrote something. I just looked in the exhibit list and I don't really see.
I didn't see it.
I thought we had one, but. Could be mistaken.
Well, there definitely was one in the other file, I know that.
The wetlands file?
No, no. You had submitted an application.
Oh.
Which you withdrew.
Right.
And there definitely was a Health Department comment in that.
I saw it in Kevin's comments, I did not see a, a letter from the Health Department.
And I recall having a discussion with them, saying I needed a new one.
Okay.
So listen, you can follow.
Yeah, you can follow. One exists, you know that. You can try that.
Leon, anything else?
No, I'm good for that.
Michael?
Well, it sounds like it's a sincere attempt to remediate the property. I think the important points are an implementation schedule, which you've agreed to, correct?
Yes.
And to define seasonality a little better.
Yes.
Now, would you remove the porta potties at the end of the defined season then?
I, I mean, yeah, they wouldn't want to pay for them when it was, when it was possibly be used.
Okay, I heard no other comments.
I have nothing other than my comments that I have already stated about the temporary and the permanent sanitary facilities.
Okay, well, I think we can also maybe provide some additional information for the port of portation. Would do our best.
Okay.
Did, when you, when you approached the Health Department, do you tell them how many employees?
We, we express, we.
No, but I mean, did you give them a number of employees?
Yeah, we explicitly discussed the operations and how it's used and what it's.
So what number of employees did you come up with?
It, it's not even, this operation doesn't have any permanent employees in this facility. It's not like someone comes here at, at 7:00 AM and is here until 5:00 when they go home. That's not how the.
So is that what they, they base the porta potties on?
They, they, in discussing the operation, the Health Department, and after doing our testing, they said, this is the operation, this is how we want to use it, this is what it would be used for. And their response was, portable toilets is perfectly acceptable, there's nothing in the health code that requires a building for a permanent facility.
No, and I understand that, but I'm saying that when we approve this, we're approving it for his use.
Correct.
We're going to, if he sells that property and somebody else goes in there to do a construction business and brings in 30 employees, does the Health Department take that into consideration when they told you that you can use temporary porta potties?
Yeah, I, I can't, um, the simple actives, they, I mean, any.
Why don't we just get clarification from the Health Department?
We can make clarification from the Health Department.
Because I, as unconflicting information, that I recall them saying, just because there's no building, there's no use for it.
Well, there was, there was, there was initial discussion when the Sanitarian wasn't here, that the, 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 the director of the Health Department had one opinion and then the Sanitarian had a different opinion. And the Sanitarian, referring back to what the code says and what the state statutes are, he was the one who applied the.
Yeah, again, let's get clarification directly from them, so.
We can, we're having to do that.
Because we could all.
Yep. And, and, but, but even if, but again, the, the use we're requesting in terms of outdoor storage is so narrow, even if this was told to another contractor, if that contractor was only just storing material there, they'd be wasting money if they're paying multiple people to be sitting there watching the potties. But we'll get additional information.
Okay.
Anything else from anybody?
Good.
All right, let's open this up to the floor. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this application? Does anyone have any general questions or comments? Okay, back to you, Mr. Soli.
So it's just an information for our discussion, so we will be providing some additional information to the commission, summarizing what we discussed and additional information to staff's calendar that we received earlier this week and we cannot see you on.
I think calendar wise, it may.
Give it attention?
Yeah, because I think we have to, we have to the 23rd, so we would need it to the 7th.
Now, what's the schedule with Thanksgiving?
Our next meeting is December 7th.
December 7th.
Yeah, so obviously we're not.
Because there's, there's five, there's five Thursdays in this month.
Right.
Uh-huh, you know, you haven't done any.
Is this the second Thursday?
Yeah.
Already?
Yes, the year's almost over.
Wow, that's terrifying.
Time flies, we're having fun. So anyway, in order to continue the hearing without having a special meeting, we would need an extension by you.
We're having, we're having a letter, a letter, right. And we can see you on the 7th.
Okay. Continue to the 7th.
29th is the deadline for this meeting.
You never, you didn't get out of here. Here's, this is making no sense. You know, people are wrong with graphics.
Sorry.
See if we can take them out of the graphic.
All right, next up, item number eight. RAA 2017-10, file number 993E, accessory outdoor dining. In accordance with Connecticut General Statutes, 8-7D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chamber, 7th Pan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut on Thursday, November 16th, 2017, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter concerning the following. RAA 2017-10, file number 993E, accessory outdoor dining. Planning and zoning commission proposed zoning text amendment, adding regulations for accessory outdoor dining. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. All right, Will, exhibits.
Exhibit number one, zoning text amendment proposed by the commission. Exhibit two, we should apply referral notice, notices. Exhibit three, adjacent residential hall, referral notices. Exhibit four, referral notice to pouring water and public health department. Exhibit five, the referral response from West Cog Regional Planting Agency with no comment. Exhibit six, response or acknowledgement of valid referral by North Park Valley Regional Planting Agency. Exhibit seven. Exhibit seven, fire marshal comments. Exhibit eight, response of referral from the North Duck Valley Regional Planning Agency indicating the action has no, a minimum municipal concern of impact. Of course, the other, um, that's all there is from the exhibits. More than we, we did a public hearing notice and it was read. In addition, there's other, the other regional planning agencies that were referred to as well, the municipalities surrounding the community that were, did not respond. They were given more than thirty days under statutes to do so, so no response is considered under statutes to be, no objection and no, no impact. Similarly, we did not receive any response from Aquarian Water or Public Health Department under those insufficient time given to those entities as well. We're here for public hearing. This is a Commission proposing this action for establishing regulations for outdoor dining. Run through them a little quickly. So presently, there are no regulations specifically about outdoor dining, and I think this has been an issue for a while. And so obviously, your Commission could, would help the staff look together these regulations to establish regulations for outdoor dining that relate to existing restaurants and food service type businesses. So that covers the first two sections, why we're doing it and who it applies to. Then it goes into some operational requirements. The outdoor dining has to relate to a food service use. It can't be part of, you know, just any, any type of use. It's really related to a food use, an accessory component to that, an accessory use to a principal use, so it's not a standalone thing by itself. The graph regulation has a series of requirements as far as location. So it needs to be near the, the use that it's related to, obviously from both a functional point of view, an operational point of view, and then also an aesthetic point of view, and safety point of view. It also has to be designed to adhere with American Disabilities Act, obviously for accessibility. And there's some specific other regulations to the access between the restaurant use in the outdoor dining area and sidewalks. And also goes into where it cannot go, obviously not in parking areas. We don't want it in sidewalks, except for the exception is that if there's an oversized sidewalk, it can go and spill into the sidewalk as long as there is adequate sidewalk that will provide the true pedestrian traffic. That's probably less of an issue in places like Monroe than it might be in more of a side for the pedestrian continuation. It can't go in the landscape buffer areas for obvious reasons, or into the required yard setbacks. And it can't obviously take up areas for septic disposal or supply and other things that's maybe inappropriate. The maximum area is proposed to be twenty-five percent of the total gross area of the principal use. Obviously, we don't want the outdoor area becoming the principal use, it's an accessory use, and that's how you do that through size and what, that's what makes it accessory. Containment separation and protection. We're locating these things outside. A lot of times they're close to the sidewalk, close to the driveway access, close to the parking areas. We want to make them separated and protected. It doesn't mean they're, you know, have to be far away, but they have, the closer they are, the more protection they would need. And there's many ways to do that. You can do that through some landscaping, you can do that through structured, things such as oversized, you know, follies that are decorative that build into a fence mechanism, or, you know, large planters that serve as a planter, plus serve as a, a, a protection between the vehicle coming towards the landscape area. The outdoor dining area, obviously they have to be designed in such a way that they can stop the impact of the vehicle. So that is left up to the individual applicants to come with a different proposal, because every site will dictate a different solution. Then we get into the accessory components of this use, and you allow things like the umbrellas, the heating units, the things we all see in outdoor dining. And they have to comply with the Health and Building Codes, obviously, and that, those things should be stored when they're not in use appropriately. Utilities, obviously they have to have sufficient water supply and sufficient septic disposal to operate the additional outdoor dining. Prohibiting sound systems, amplification, public address systems, obviously either outdoors. Lighting, the lighting has to comply with the existing lighting standards, obviously ducts are compliant, but there's a little kind of give for some hand-me-down blue lighting, some very low voltage lighting you might see, like, sort of like the seasonal lights that we have for Christmas. To give it some character and presence of place. Off-street parking, obviously they're going to generate potentially more visitors to that use. And that will vary depending on the scale and the type of restaurant and food service it is. Some places, they start off, you know, that's where their overflow crowd would go during the times when the restaurant's busy, and maybe they'll just serve appetizers out there, or they could be actually full dining out there. So obviously, that's going to generate potentially more patrons. At some point in time, you could have a facility as outdoor dining, indoor seating, and they both would be full capacity. Obviously, that's going to have a larger parking demand than if it was just full seating inside and it was more transient use on the outside. So the Commission has also wrote in, you know, for the smaller places that have less than eight seats, now we don't need to change the parking count. That should be accommodated to the base parking count. So if you get like a pizzeria takeout and they have a couple of tables, four seats, five seats, it's not really going to generate more traffic, so we don't need to do more parking spaces. The hours of operation, again, going to the issue of being outdoors, eight AM to ten AM daily, which most apartments correspond with most food operations anyway. Most restaurants stop serving at nine to ten, or at least the last seating is nine.
How about delis that are open early?
Well, delis are open early, but online people are eating outdoors in the.
I'm just throwing it out there.
And they're getting their coffee, the bagel, and moving on to work, so don't see that as much of a problem. And that in a nutshell is the new draft for the year.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Are you looking at me?
Well, we start with you.
Nice.
You're on the hot seat.
Nope, I'm not today. I'm, I'm good. Good job.
No question.
Kathy?
I have two, two questions. First, first question, we talked about this, but I'm sorry, I don't remember if we resolved it, or we just let it go, or it came through decision, I don't remember. Are logos on the umbrellas, did we decide?
We weren't going to get into that.
Okay, if I can remember. Um, and then my, my other question is, we have many existing outdoor dining establishments. Will we, will they, you know, staff, is somebody going to notify them that now they need to be in compliance? Or do we just let them sort of figure out that, oh, we got a new regulation? How do they know that they may not be in compliance and what it's going to take to get them into compliance?
That's the CEO's job.
So, I mean, is that, is there a formal process where we notify these people, or we, we don't?
Well, what this will do is will provide for the majority, a half, to legitimize what might be not permitted at this point in time. There are some that are permitted, like.
Comberlin Farms, I think.
Yeah, Comberlin Farms, Usterre.
Usterre Ramano.
Yeah, they, they have an outdoor dining in the back that was approved. So again, this does open the path for those who might have outdoor seating that's not been permitted. Obviously, that will, once this goes into effect, that goes into the list of the CEO to add to any other thing that may be warranted, because he can now advise them if there's a back.
Okay.
But we're not going to do a campaign. Well, he may choose, I don't.
Well, maybe even just, you know, something published that people would know, we now have a new regulation and therefore that there are people who might want to be in compliance, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, reporters here, what are your neighbors?
He's not writing right now, so I don't think it's going to.
Leon?
Michael?
Oh, is it, on section C, right in the beginning, is it, do you have to have fifty seats to have a liquor?
Yes, you do.
In Monroe, you're right.
Yeah, that's.
And what does it mean at the end, including accessory bar seating by a person employed by the establishment?
Neighbor says, uh, there's persons to the table, that means there's the, well, first of all, the bar seating is in addition to the table seats. So you got to have two seats total.
Fifty total door seats, including bar.
By a person, a table, and a staff.
It's, the liquor is provided by a person employed.
Yeah, that must be.
It's a long, it's a long sentence. You gotta look back a few lines.
I'm trying to look back, I still couldn't.
The key to that sentence is we have to have fifty seats, and then include that across.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Well, the only thing that I came up with is, under accessory components, six point twelve point seven, C, sound systems prohibited. I think in the last line, where it says not utilized for live performances or recorded audio, just add or video transmissions. Does anybody from the public have any comments? Okay.
So, if the Commission's in pleasure, if you close this hearing, and maybe if you want, you can.
What do you think?
Closed.
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 Hearing's closed. Okay. Item number nine, site plan review, SDP two thousand seventeen dash O six, file number one-two-six. Eight-one-four Main Street, accessor map ninety-three, lot forty-four, B one District. Site development plan application to convert a single-family dwelling to a professional office, including site modifications affecting access, parking, utilities, landscaping, shrub removal. Well, you got a list of exhibits?
Exhibit one, site development plan application. Exhibit two, wetlands water courses, and we should report with the joiners list. Exhibit three, four plan set. Exhibit four, certified mail, notice to Aquarian Department of Public Health. Exhibit five, proposed alterations, applicant. Exhibit six, fire marshal comments. Exhibit seven, Health Department comments. Exhibit eight, additional fire marshal comments. Exhibit nine, notice to proceed agent approval in the wetlands. Exhibit ten, town planner comments. Exhibit eleven, notice to proceed on agent approval application. Exhibit twelve, town engineer comments. Exhibit thirteen, letter to postpone, uh, on the applicant. Exhibit fourteen, response to comments by the applicant. Exhibit fifteen, updated plan set. Exhibit sixteen, zoning board of appeals variance approval resolution. Exhibit seventeen, updated planner comments. Exhibit eighteen, chief police comments, and that is all.
Okay, for the applicant.
Yes, my name is Rob Bellroy, the applicant. Of course, my, the engineer is not here today, but we're going to have to come back. I've just recently submitted, um, notice for an additional, um, agent approval with regard to him in the wetlands. I think that was published today in the Monroe Courier, so I think it's fifteen days, I think I've told, a notice requiring for somebody if they want to object.
Yeah, you got, you have to come and see me about the actual, uh, operation to the application unless Gabe already did that with you?
Yeah, he, I believe he did that. I'll, I'll try to call him tomorrow and verify that he did that. Now, remember, we, we've got back and forth, and both Mr. Shaplon and Mr. Press, they have been talking up to work with myself. This is my, the, the case, and my, um, the engineering firm that I'm using. I've looked at this a number of times. Comments have gone back and forth. We've received, we submitted, uh, an amended plan, I guess, I don't believe in the terminology, but an amended site plan, a week or so ago. We received comments this week, but we haven't gotten to any of those comments into the site plan yet, so we don't have what will be the final site plan. Press has sat down with me, I forget who it was yesterday or the day before, and went over a lot of these additional changes that need to be made. Some of them are substantive, some of them are just, I guess, a bit straighter. One of them is the waiting for the additional time to pass for the agent approval. There's an issue with regard to burial utility lines, which will be resolved before the next meeting. There's an issue with whether the telephone pole needs to be relocated. The plan currently shows the sidewalk that's proposed as running through the telephone pole. And I addressed that with the engineering firm, and they told me, I don't know if there's a mistake there, either it is running through it and we're going to have to move the pole, or it's not, and I'm going to request that we don't have to use the pole, because I believe it would be the sink next door at the pharmaceutical.
Farm, compound pharmaceutical?
Yeah, yeah, they're right back, they're, they're on our boundary, we're right next to them. Uh, I don't think it's going to be any closer to the sidewalk than the pole that's on their property is to the sidewalk.
Yeah, we, we can talk about that. I mean, typically, people look at it like, they know that the minimum width requirement for a handicap, uh, walk or an opening being, what is it, three or three and a half feet? And they say, well, as long as you have that minimum width, then it's okay to put a pole in, in a sidewalk. And I, I don't believe that's the case, because an ADA, ADA is for other handicaps as well, and one of them being blind, blindness, if you're walking down the sidewalk and it's five feet wide, and all of a sudden there's a pole in the way, you're going to hit it. You know, if it were three feet wide and you go past the pole, then it's not an issue. So we can talk about that.
But, but I think I agree, and I'm not, you know, I'm going to be stuck with having to move the pole if it's going through the sidewalk, but I think my engineer told me that that might be a mistake in the plan now, and it's not going through the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
So that, that I'm hoping. By the way, you need to have that same concern for the people with a cell phone that's now too.
That's true.
Who's not a disability. So that's another issue that we have to address. The, the current plan had moved where the rain garden is, but it didn't remove reference to where the rain garden prior, was prior in the prior plan, site plan. So that has to be removed. We have to provide details with regard to lighting, correct the dimensions on the sign. I have to get ramp construction detail. We want to incorporate pictures or elevations in the actual site plan itself instead of just so many photos separately. And I believe the tree size, or the terminology used for the tree size is incorrect, at least with some of the tree size on the, on the landscaping plan, needs to be corrected. And also, uh, I can't remember everything else that I went over with him, but there's one thing that I did want to submit, if I could have written request, that if the site plan is granted, that I'd be allowed to occupy the premises and operate the premises as the law office until the spring, because this is not going to be resolved before the middle of December, and as previously noted, we can't get in there, we can't do the paving, we can't do the excavation of the paving of the park, the new park here, the red, three, two or three parking spaces, we're not going to be able to do any of the landscaping. I talked to the builder, I've got the salt detail in writing here, I talked to the builder who's going to construct the handicap ramp. He said he can possibly do that in December if the temperatures stay above forty or forty-five degrees, but if they drop into the thirties and below, he won't be able to construct the handicap ramp until the spring, or at least till the ground floors again, or so. So those are the three, I think, key components to the site plan, is the paving, the sidewalk, the landscaping, the handicap ramp, and none of those can really be done during the winter. It's a small law office. I've operated the law office for twenty-seven and a half years. The first twenty-seven of it was in Monroe, we were in the office building next to Riverwood's Restaurant for twenty years. For twenty years, we found a nice little home in Newtown, just across the town line. And we loved the privacy and we loved the setting and had our own little place, so we rented that. That leases up actually this month, but we're extending it another month, and hopefully don't have to extend it. It's longer than that. But when I found this place come up for sale, it gives us what we have now. It brings us back to Monroe. It's myself, I have a partner, we have a secretary and a paralegal. We don't meet with a lot of people at our office. Maybe initial consultation, somebody comes into our office and meets with us. Most of everything else is done by internet, follow fax, at court, at, you know, at other locations for hearings and meetings. So there's not a lot of high traffic. We don't have any walk-in business at all. And so I would ask that we be allowed to operate until the spring. And I would propose that the work be done as soon as the ground goes, that be in March or April at the latest. And none of this, I should think, would take more than a month to accomplish all of it, the landscaping, the paving. It's a tiny little lot. I think it's point three acres or something. And it's just a small area that has to be actually developed as far as the parking area.
Do you own the property?
I am in contract to purchase the property. We do have the written consent of the attorney. It's the properties, all prior owners had built it back in nineteen forty-eight or the late forties, and it passed away last year, so their daughters who are acting as administrators, the state is selling it. And they've allowed me to go through this process and sign off with permission to do this, to see if I can get zoning approval before I buy it, since I'm buying it for an office, if I can ever get zoning approval. To, you know, need.
So your purchase is contingent upon our approval?
It's, yes, the purchase is contingent upon the approval of the commission. Would you like me to?
Uh, they should go to Will.
Excuse me, what size did you say the property is?
It's point three acres.
Oh, it's a third of an acre.
It's, yeah, it's just a third of an acre. It's, well, it's very narrow, it goes deep, deeper than it is now. It's not square or... And I would hope to have everything else resolved. Will, like I say, everybody at Town Hall here in the Planning and Zoning Department has been very helpful to us. So maybe we can resolve most of these issues prior to the next hearing on December seventh.
Maybe we can put that in caps on the paper, that. Staff is great.
Please do. Well, they have been for me anyway. They've been very helpful when accommodating it.
Tell everyone you know.
Thank you for recognizing.
Well, when he said it more than once, I figured he was telling the truth.
Well, that's why I'm hoping, very optimistic, I said it the second time, that we will be able to resolve just about all of this by the next one we go.
Well, why don't we do this, why don't we see if any of the commissioners have any questions right now? So that if there are any other issues, they can hopefully be resolved in a timely fashion.
No, I really don't have any questions. I think, I think if you follow the plans and you go by what you say, I'm good with it. And I'm all for you using it until, until the spring, then you can get everything up, running and going. Because you don't have a whole lot going on here that, that will take you.
It's almost like Paige said, I know people of residences that they have more than one residence.
Yeah, there's not, right. You're probably, your landscaping will probably take you longer. I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm looking at Will's comments from the thirteenth of this month for the parking. Did you change the parking since you've given us these plans or?
No, he's, he proposed this one, we added a fifth parking spot based on prior discussions or comments, I think. And Will is suggesting that we push it back a little further towards the back of the property to allow room for the handicap vehicle to back up.
Right.
And so we will hopefully implement that by the next, with the next plan.
Okay, you have no issue with that doing that?
No, I don't. There's, there's room to do, to move it back and again, it's, I don't think that's going to go back further. Will, do you remember how far back that?
Just a few.
Just a few.
Like Bruno, I don't have any problem with you going in there. I mean, you can go in there as soon as you want, as long as you meet the conditions that the commission puts upon that. I don't have any other questions.
I agree also. I have no issue with you moving in early. Quick question on the landscaping, Will's comments. He mentioned that the plant schedule indicates three trees, but shows only two. I'm assuming putting the third tree on the plan is not a, a deal.
No, it is. Whatever Will's suggesting with regard to the plants, I will ask, wait, do you need it or not?
And the lot, there's an informative comment here from, actually from Scott, that the lot being only sixty feet wide. Scott, is that a big concern for even a small truck? I mean, you raised the issue. What do you, what do you?
Well, I'm just, I'm really just telling you guys that when you get into lots that size, I mean, you, you can't accommodate any truck. And so it's a, it's just an inherent problem.
It's just the way it is and it's the way it is.
It's just the way it is. We talked about, well, what would a UPS truck do? And they do what they have to do.
Park in the street and put his flashers on.
Well, they'll, or they'll pull up.
They'll be a part of the driveway.
The shoulder, the grass shoulder strip area. They do a multi-point turn in the, in the parking lot. They do what they have to do. I'm just letting you know that it, it doesn't work for a truck.
And I appreciate the fact that you're gonna do the sidewalk. That's it for me.
Yeah, no, I'm good. I'm glad that you're, we're good staff.
The sidewalk's gonna connect to the sidewalk next to you.
Yeah.
Yes, we're finally got a continuation.
Finally we got.
Isn't that amazing?
See that? It works.
See? See what happens, Bill, when you approve the sidewalks? Oh, good. Sorry. No, I don't have any questions.
My only question, which has been pretty much addressed, is that, that fifth parking space. You know, if someone were in the handicap parking space and someone pulled into that fifth space, they'd be blocked in. But that's where we're talking about moving it up.
Moving it down a little bit.
Or why, or why not just add one here?
Or that's the alternative.
You know, maybe add a, instead of having your fifth space here, this is pretty much gonna be access to your proposed dumpster pad. Throw another parking space here.
Well, the dumpster will never, will never be there because it's in a setback, but.
I think the issue with moving it up there is that starts to approach upon the, the alternate septic area.
I mean, I assume that the scale of this development, that's basically occupied by the owner problem. So they're gonna, they're gonna be leaving when no one's in the parking lot.
Okay, yeah, I see your reserved septic. Okay. That, that was my only comment. But you, you say you have four employees.
Well, there's, there's, yeah, technically two employees, myself and my partner, so we're owners of the business. I'm the owner of the car.
Secretary and paralegal.
The secretary and the paralegal. My partner and I are usually on the road, so we're often not there. Usually there's, there's rarely more than two or three cars. The only time any client comes to the office, we have first consultations, usually they'll come to the office. Sometimes meet them elsewhere. And after that, it's only if they're dropping off a paper or picking up a paper or something that they have to get to us. There's no volume of people coming and going from there. There's days, there's weeks go by when nobody comes in other than the postman delivering mail.
So they'll be using the handicap space to more or less turn around when they're?
If they're up at that spot, you mean?
Well, no, I mean, if, if you and your partner and your secretary and your paralegal are all in the office, you are using up all but your handicap parking space.
All but the, if we're all there at the same time, yes.
Yeah. So if someone were to come in and park in the driveway, you know, they, they wanna have the capability of turning around before exiting the property.
I'd have one of my employees drive out, the, whoever's closest to the street, so they'd be able to back into that spot.
Or use the handicap spot.
Or use the, okay.
It's a tight site. We, we understand that. And we, our, our regulations require five spaces, right? Okay. Yeah, so if you just give a little more distance, so you don't get cars boxed in, I, I think that'll work fine. I don't have any other questions or comments at this time.
Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody, very much.
So we'll.
So this will go to December, December seventeenth. So the follow-up is, you know, you follow Yamadas and the next mission is twenty.
Okay, I'll try to get ahead sooner, but I've got it.
Yeah.
So that means by November twenty-ninth, you have to have everything into staff. It's the Wednesday before, the week before the meeting.
Yes, I will have everything into staff by the twenty-ninth, and I'm hopefully gonna have the engineer get everything in there sooner than that. So trying to make additional corrections.
And if he has questions or wants to do an interim, just one sheet sent to us, we'll do that too. So we get it right.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we probably got another twenty minutes? Um, next up, extensions, we have none. Bond releases, none. Modifications, none. Meeting minutes. From November second. We don't need to seat anybody for this to work.
No, I mean, you can use. This is not, this is not a seating kind of thing.
But we're gonna, but we're gonna deliberate on outdoor seating.
Get three of you can do this, if that's all you wanna do for now.
Okay, we'll do that. All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of November the second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, any corrections, comments? I went through it. I thought everything looked fine. Michael, did you pick up anything?
I don't, I don't, no.
Okay. We call the roll, starting with Leon.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay. Next up, application deliberations or determinations. I would like to deliberate on the outdoor dining. This is a commission-proposed text amendment, as Will just outlined for us. Put together by staff in the Regulation Subcommittee. It was reviewed previously by the commission before it was sent on to the public hearing. We held a public hearing tonight, and other than one minor text addition, there was no other questions or comments. So I would entertain a motion. Are you gonna seat anyone or just do the three of you? Let me just do the three of us. Okay.
I move to accept RAA two oh one seven dash ten, File nine nine three E, accessory outdoor dining. As drafted, second rule.
It's not, yeah. How are we, I thought you wanted to do that, does he want to do the one edit that was suggested?
What was the edit? Oh, to add, um, video.
Or video.
Video. As amended, Paul, but.
Okay.
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? I'm good. You're good? Call the roll.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay. Nothing else to deliberate on this evening. Regulation Review Amendment Work Session, we held one this evening before this meeting. We're still working on a couple of items that... Once we get them a little bit further along, we'll, we'll bring them to the full commission for review. Correspondence, any correspondence? All right, I have some correspondence, but I'll, I'll put, roll it into item seventeen, Commission Reports, the Chairman Reports. Couple of things, for those of you who are not aware of it, David Townsend has resigned from the commission. His new job has him traveling a lot, and he's just not going to be able to make the majority of our meetings. So he has resigned. We are in the process of vetting a new replacement through Town Council. Hopefully, they'll be appointed before our next meeting. Congratulations to those of you who were running for reelection and got reelected. This is Kathy's last meeting. Kathy, thank you so much for your, your time and your service to the town. It's greatly appreciated. We will miss you.
I hope they get a woman to sit in.
What's that?
I hope whoever replaces Dave is a woman. It would just be nice to have another woman. I, when I first got on here, there were three of us.
It's not.
It's gonna be an all-man group.
And we will have, Ken Wilk will be replacing Kathy as an alternate. I don't know if many of you know Ken, but he's, he's been in town a long time. And then one more piece of information. There's been a lot of rumor going on, but at eight thirty-five, I received a text from John Kimball. Bill just wanted to let you know that officially as of today, Walmart is not building a store in Monroe. And he has sent out a press release to the courier and to the town staff. And there was a notice of lease termination filed on the land record today, so Walmart project is no more. And that's all I have to report.
Um, can I, that's just, you had, you mentioned last time you were going to the meeting with EDC. Did you have your meeting?
I did. I had a, not, I, I had a meeting with the new chairperson, Donna Verdisco. Just a preliminary meeting. She's new to EDC and, you know, she was looking for some input as far as what I, as the chairman of the zoning commission, felt her role should be, or what EDC's role should be. And they're a new group and they're trying to get established, and I, I think that there's a potential for them to do a lot of good for the town.
Um, and I just have a question. I noticed a new sign where northeast Lasers, Maltoos and Boratius is.
Okay.
Anybody?
The sign went?
A new sign went up.
I know, on the building or the property?
No, it's a hall sign.
Well, they had one there.
No, but this is a new one.
Good.
I don't know.
When you say new, because I mean.
New in the last couple of days. New, new sign.
Because they did have a new one with those in the last year, so I don't know why they would put another one there.
As of today, there were still the two signs. There was the old sign, which was basically white, and the new sign, which is basically monopumpkin color, but it's kind of creamy pink. You know, you saw it. Did you see the two signs?
Yeah, it's a.
So the old one hasn't come down yet, and then the one that's up.
Yeah, so they're putting up the new sign. It's. Well, then they're most likely doing that whatever.
I am bringing that to your attention.
Get out there, Will.
We'll talk to Joe, we'll talk to Joe and follow up on that.
Yeah, as of today, the two signs were still there. I think it went up yesterday or the day before, but it's just the last couple of days.
Okay. Now it's dark when I go by there in the morning, and it's dark when I go by there at night.
But it's got an interior light, so you'll see it.
Oh, good.
You will see it.
Anybody else have anything to report? Staff?
By the way, we met with Donna as well, and went over how we can help and talk a little bit about our role and so.
Good. All right, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn. Adjourned at nine twelve.